Pat, you got sick of shaving? I would be happy if... All my hair is already over and I never had to shave or get a hair out of it. I mean, I just do it when I have a bulge.
I wish you don't shave the whole thing out.
I'm not gonna even shave it off. I just want it all pulled. Second friend's trying to... She's just like, "Oh, this is bad." I was checking service.
Eighteen percent of rural counties have lost the faith. They have four candidates in the area with three...
Four and a half million folks. First, now it's a serious... No, it's not the same thing that they had in Kansas City. A lot of people are... But see, they don't... We need to stay low. Do you know what they do that won't tear it right up? Oh, yeah. Four of them. I think this is the... But you ever been, um, real pretty... Sure. Ball, I mean. Yeah, I was a major softball player. Softball. I thought... You're saying you're scared. The world has a can of action. There's a noise of... I don't know. It's just... It's a bullet. Well, well.
Between city and county.
Just the... I was one of those. It was so... Um, I'm just sorry. She was like, "Yeah."
So, two parts, two parts of what it's called. How many is the lobby? It's just... It's just boxes of gambling cards.
It's a distraction. I should... I've got this feature for... For...
Uh, it's a... Yes, we're having this.
That's my son's. And some of the... I'd have you can check.
Sort of another meeting after this. So, here's the chair. Well, that's in the chair. This is started.
Okay, here we are. With our... Maybe the whole. So, you have your package. You've looked at, um, the minutes. We have some information on personnel building and building committee. So, we're gonna go right into our proposed revision to the Cook County Tobacco Ordinance. And, um, I'll turn it over to the...
Sure.
And whoever else.
Okay, I'll get things started. So, I printed off copies of the original tobacco ordinance for Cook County and then the revision, which was drafted in consultation with the Public Health Law Center and also with our county attorney, Molly, who had a chance to review the ordinance last week with a lot of the Allison. And I believe, Pat, you were also kind of moved in to that moving. So, um, so we have all the original language. I also created a tool that walks through how this policy could affect different groups of people in the community and different considerations that the commissioners might want to take into account as we consider the specifics of raising the age to purchase commercial tobacco to 21 in Cook County. So, um, we can go one of two ways. We can get right into the proposal language itself or we can walk through this tool I created, which is hopefully slightly easier to read and think about, so, um...
The tool starts first.
Let's do that. Okay. So, the proposed decision is the decision to raise the legal age to purchase commercial tobacco products to 21. Um, this is in part in response to the recent rise in youth vaping in our community that we've heard about through news. It's happening all over the country. It's also happening here in the schools. So, in developing this policy, we've done quite a bit of collaboration and work both with the Saty Mountain Clinic and ISD 166, who are both other agencies in the community that are seeing the effects of the recent rise in youth commercial tobacco use and vaping. So, um, the groups of people that I believe will be most affected by the proposal, positively affected are youth under the age of 18. Statistically, we know that, um, if young people don't begin to use tobacco by the time they're 21, they probably will never start. And so, that curbs a whole generation of people who could potentially struggle with tobacco and other addictions in the future. So, I believe the primary beneficiaries of this policy change will be young people in our community. Um, the healthcare system will benefit from having fewer medical costs associated with smoking. And the economy as a whole will benefit from increased propensity and fewer people missing work due to smoking related illnesses. So negatively affected, this section, some of that is actually the positive, but it's trying to show what the economic impact of this policy might be. The focus of enforcement of raising the age to purchase tobacco to 21 is retailers. So, the retailers would be the bodies that are responsible for following the ordinance and not selling the products to folks who are underage. Um, so there are some statistics here about what that might look like for the tobacco retailer industry. Do you want to add anything about economic impacts?
To the retailer?
Yes.
So, if we're talking statistically, um, uh, retailers' impact, and I see you have that 2% in here. Um, essentially, 2% of all of their tobacco sales is made up by the 18 to 21-year-old range. So, really, it's only 2% of sales that we're talking about for the retailer. However, that 2% of sales to the retailer is the majority of the access to the underage youth who are getting these products, if that makes sense.
So, in other words, the most young people who are accessing commercial tobacco products are buying those products from people in that 18 to 21-year-old age range. So, there will be an effect on the supply of commercial tobacco to young people in middle and high school. Um, moving on to the second point, people that we've consulted with developing the proposal. Um, we've worked with American Lung Association. Amanda is here representing that group today. Public Health Law Center leadership and as well as all staff at ISD 166, partly at Saty Mountain Clinic, doing in-service training for all the staff at the schools about vaping and about how to respond to vaping. Our PHHS advisory committee, already mentioned the Saty Mountain Clinic, the Local Public Health Association, and our community health board, law enforcement, who and the Grand Portage Tobacco Coordinatorship Coordinator. Both of those bodies will be present this evening at the panel event we're holding at the Arrowhead Center for the Arts and also the Cook County Chamber of Commerce, who will also be participating on the panel this evening. Um, groups we haven't consulted with. Um, we haven't done as much work with the local charter schools. I think the rise in youth vaping has primarily shown up in middle and high school, and so it's primarily been ISD 166 that's been coming to us, looking for support. But that's definitely a portion of the community that we should continue to outreach to. And as well as the city of Grand Marais, we haven't done much with the city at this point, although they are aware of the fact that we're discussing this ordinance and they're invited to the panel event this evening. So, how would this proposal, moving on to number three, how would it improve or impair the social conditions of the community? It would improve the social conditions by lowering the number of students who vape. When we look at the research, raising the age to purchase commercial tobacco to 21 leads to a 25% decrease in youth tobacco use. So, that's the primary, um, way we would see improvement in the social conditions of the community. One thing we saw from the student survey is that middle and high school students perceive most of their peers to be vaping frequently when less than half are actually vaping at all. So, any decrease in the number of students vaping would have a ripple effect in how vaping is perceived socially, and that would likely lead to further declines in the number of youth vaping. Um, another piece to note, the proposed ordinance change clearly separates traditional tobacco use from commercial tobacco use, so it would not affect traditional practices related to sacred tobacco in native communities. Um, I'm gonna skip over four since we already talked a bit about the economic impact to retailers. Another aspect to consider would be environmental conditions. So, fewer youth vaping would lead to improved air quality in areas where people previously vaped. That's a concern that's been voiced by ISD 166 in terms of students hiding in the bathroom and vaping and exposure to secondhand smoke. So, I think that there is an environmental health effect that would also be seen from this policy. So, one thing that this ordinance does not affect that we would need to continue to work on is the health needs of young people who have less access to commercial tobacco products but are struggling with tobacco addiction. How do we get resources into the school to help people who fall into that group? So, this proposed ordinance change doesn't do everything, and there are still areas where public health would continue to partner with community organizations and the schools to have the greatest effect. And that's one big one.
So, vaping is fairly new, and I don't know if you have numbers or anything on it. And it allegedly is created to help traditional smokers stop smoking. But how many people have started with vaping and are addicted?
That's a good question.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead and take it away.
Um, I believe the numbers are now nationally are roughly eight million adults and roughly three or four million youth. So...
Because it has nicotine in it, so it's yeah, an addictive substance.
It does. And if you recall back when I did the presentation a while ago, I mean, we're talking astronomical levels of nicotine beyond what we're used to. Um, each Juul Pod, which is the standard device that most kids are using, each pod has, on average, about two packs worth of cigarettes of nicotine. And kids are going through at least a pot a day, and some kids are going through some small pods.
Is it really one pod is how much?
Two packs of cigarettes of nicotine. So, roughly 40 cigarettes of nicotine in one little pod.
For those of us that like efficiency, I think it's effective, yes, you know.
Right. It certainly is definitely more efficient, but we don't want that for our kids.
So, continuing on a little bit with what else we would do in addition to the ordinance, because as I said, this is one piece of a broader collaborative effort to address youth vaping in the community. We'd continue to work with the clinic and the schools to provide links to cessation resources. We'd continue to partner with the Grand Portage Tobacco Coordinator to better understand and support culturally relevant efforts to decrease tobacco-related health disparities. And we would partner with local retailers and law enforcement to make sure that the ordinance change is well-understood and implemented. So, this is really one piece of a bigger picture. It's not a silver bullet that's gonna solve all the tobacco-related health issues that we see in the community, but it's a good place to start, and it's something that's statistically backed up and proven in other communities to lower rates of youth vaping. So, that's the background. Um, if anyone has other questions, I'd love to hear about those before getting into the specifics of the ordinance.
Do you have the resources to enforce this update ordinance?
Well, I mean, we used to do it before. We would find it. I think the ordinance screens, we do by annual checks twice a year. So, we can do that probably. Um, the, where we ran into problems and why we really haven't done it last few years is finding the people to go in and do buy. The young people. We had a resource from Duluth. Um, that just kind of went away. Tapped in any resource, especially in Cook County. You know, I don't think it's, I don't think it's right to expect the youth in Cook County to go assist us in enforcing these ordinances in Cook County. It's better to get people from other counties to help us out.
Well, the retailer probably knows. They care.
One thing I've heard other counties in the Northeast doing is asking neighboring counties for help in finding youth to assist with compliance checks for retailers.
And I'd be happy to assist with that, yeah.
The main difference, though, with the enforcement is, is, but the only difference is age, right?
Right.
So, so it's not... It wouldn't be any different aside from you had a larger pool of select.
Right. Well, in the ordinance, if I can point people there quickly. Uh, Section 900. If you might, page 88. So, um, it's, if you go down, one, two, three, five lines down, and it says one person between the ages of 15 and 17 and one person between the ages of 18 and 20. Um, I had underlined those because I wanted, I actually want to have some discussion on that anyways. Does it have to be that specific? Or could it just be anybody under the age of 21, above the age of 16?
Um... Is there a reason that it's recommended?
This, so yeah, so this is just the recommendation to add variance between the ages and the, and what they look like and to get a feel for who gets sold to more often or doesn't. Um, this is not a deal-breaker area, so this is certainly, this is a more flexible area of the ordinance, and I could take this back to the Public Health Law Center and ask for, if you feel that that would be too challenging, to get those variances, especially in the smaller communities like this. They understand that that is more difficult than St. Paul. You know, or even Duluth. So, um, you know, it, that is the recommendation, but it is open.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I would also like to know the reason behind it.
Right.
Just that it is flexible and the reasoning is important. I was just gonna try to look it up here. It's all the time.
Is this for all tobacco or just for vaping stuff?
It would be for any commercial tobacco product.
If you're gonna read your other thing, you're about to... Um, municipal competition tobacco, probably gonna feel different. I go down to the local store and buy a big tobacco for the year. People, everyone. All are even. And I put people down there economically.
Any questions about that?
Sure.
Band members, though, under the age of 18 currently can also do that or cannot do?
Well, you can't purchase tobacco.
Right, right.
The only piece, I'm trying to find where I saw it in the ordinance. There is a piece about compliance that says if a person declares that it's for traditional use, that they'll be held harmless under the ordinance. I want to try to find the exact language to pull it out.
I'm talking about Section 1300, Exceptions and Defenses. It shall be an affirmative offense to a violation of the ordinance for a person who, no, um, that clause would throw that, or the sentence would throw that. Nothing in this ordinance shall prevent provision of tobacco or tobacco-related devices for persons by the lawfully recognized indigenous practice or the lawfully recognized religious, spiritual, cultural, etc. So, it just becomes a matter of how, um, how the sheriff's office and prosecutors, law courts interpret that defense, and, you know, can somebody prove that defense? There's a bit of discretion in how, this ordinance provides options to the sheriff's office in whether it's an administrative penalty or not, whether, um, the sheriff's office decides to cite a juvenile and then send her through diversion, which is typically what we do now.
I'm talking, if you're hating, you're only, you're not quite 21 years old. What, three years there? And unfortunately, like, you're gonna do it for life.
But maybe except on 1500. Right, they would have a defense if it was tobacco used for sacred, for a lawfully recognized religious, spiritual, or cultural, or indigenous practice. You have a defense.
I mean, also...
If there's a, you know, if the Grand Portage band wanted to give input or if you wanted to give inputs to that language and how it should change.
But that's in, this would be in Cook County as a whole.
Not city of Grand Marais.
We have, we do have tribal members that live across the reservation, and if they want to go down to the local store, they're 20 years old and want to buy tobacco, then you're, you know, sell it.
Well, we have to educate. I mean, we have a few businesses that are... Retailers are gonna have to be educated on the ordinance, right?
And the way I read it, if you, if you were 18 and you were a band member and you were to try to purchase tobacco for traditional purposes off the reservation, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be held to this ordinance because of that language.
I think what Bobby's trying to say is that in the statute, in this ordinance, they do have that right to do this, but what do they do when the retailer says, "No, I'm not going to sell to you because you're under 21 years old"?
That's what I'm trying to call retailer to be doing.
You know, when a lot of the, just if you're a card-carrying member, you know, that doesn't, you shouldn't, if you're extended, like my kids were. They should be denied the right.
Do they litter, are there litterly cards?
Yes.
And that's where I mean to know is, is that an option for us?
How do, how do 17-year-olds, is a 17-year-old participate in ceremonies at this point? Of how do they participate related to the tobacco ordinances, as I just... Are they, are they getting the tobacco from somebody else, or are they...
Well, we have a whole group to get the tobacco every time.
Right. I'm just, part of the technical...
You got a lot of technical stuff.
Yeah. Partion is, how is this, how is expecting 17-year-olds now? And what kind of a change would that be if that was extended to 20-year-olds? And I think that, from my, from my understanding, my reading, and the advertisements of, of, to keep the tobacco tradition sacred, I think there's a real opportunity for Grand Portage to partner with these type of ordinances to afford that, but you do have to figure out how and where and when and does somebody able to purchase tobacco for non-consumption purposes?
Mind if you have any insight on experiences in the process of the administration?
Yeah, so I was gonna say Carlton County is currently working on this right now as well, and they've been working closely with the Fond du Lac Reservation to make sure that they are educated onboard and supportive of it. And to this point, they have been, and they are, we're hopefully looking that that policy will pass in the next several months as well. And so, um, so they would definitely be a resource if you wanted to get in touch with somebody who is actively working on this sort of navigating a county where there is reservation, um, to have that conversation.
So, do we have their language of their policy to see how it matches with ours?
So, theirs would be very, almost identical, other than the counties. If you guys had something specific, because this, I sent your original, uh, policy to the law center, they drafted on that. And then same with Carlton County, Public Health also, Public Health Law Center. Did theirs as well. The other locations that's already done this would be Beltrami County, which also has reservation land as well. And so, they have done the same ordinance as well. So, it has been done, and to my knowledge, by going slowly.
I would be curious as to like what the education for retailers would look like, because, yeah, I agree with you, Bobby. I mean, there's a chance that like, it looks good on paper, but then if somebody's actually going into the store and trying to buy tobacco for traditional purposes, that they could be denied. And that's not the intent of the policy at all. So, if there's a way we can avoid that by being proactive with education for retailers and the people who would be, um, in the situation perhaps where they're being denied the right to buy traditional tobacco products, and by all means, I'd want to add that to the way that the policy is implemented.
Yeah, and that would certainly be a resource that I'd be happy to, to work with you all on, on creating and finding what has been done and create something that's gonna work well for this specific community.
Well, um, I certainly appreciate your work on this ordinance. Um, I would like to take a step or two back and just reiterate, and I've made this point before in our discussions about, um, the pathways in the brain that, um, that can lead to addiction and then addictive substances. I mean, because a lot of the harm is the smoke, and so I think that's why the base became an alternative to try to quit smoking, whatever is safer. But that nicotine addiction pathway, once it's established, can also lead to other addictions, whether it be alcohol or opioid, and looking, um...
But smoke isn't safer. I have family members who vape around me because I'm asthmatic, and they think it's better for me, and I still react to it. It's not...
Right, but that was how this market is, so that's why, that's why I did this.
It probably isn't better.
Right, but my, my point was the neural pathways and the addiction and substance use disorder and just trying to deal with mental health and the opioid epidemic and all of that, just how that factored into my, um, um, just my understanding of the importance of this, raising the age, so on. That's all.
I think what I've learned and studied, uh, you know, there is a cross-addiction factor in addiction. You know, the younger you start, the more damage it does, but also the more significant addictive urges that you develop. Of course, chemicals have more formative effect on the brain. There's a lot of research on what that is. But definitely younger is far more impactful in your, and more cumulative. And the more you do it, the more difficult it is.
Because I have a question with the sensitivity of religious or spiritual beliefs. Is vaping now part ceremonial? So, vaping would be an issue that we could agree on? And maybe certain types of tobacco products, I don't know, but I throw that out. There's a stronger case on vaping. And there's maybe some others, as it pertains to spiritual, cultural ceremonies or beliefs.
Yeah, I'm completely agreeing on the cultural and spiritual practices, so... Really, you need a new body for, for guidance there. Quality appropriate or inappropriate, or, you know, is it ridiculous to... Is it ridiculous to make it 21 unless you have, unless you're card carrying? Or is that, you know, I mean, it's not just silly, you know?
I think that's a part of the law. So that if a retailer is scanning everything, what, there isn't a law? And then any of our ordinances are, you know...
Is it not already in the language?
What, the exception?
Yeah.
The exception is in the language. Um, I would suggest that, um, and I, I think this would probably be recommended, um, once the ordinance is passed or even part of enacting an ordinance would be training all the retailers who would be affected. Maybe even creating a one-page cheat sheet that they can pin up behind their registers that, you know, talks about the exception. You know, the exception would only apply for traditional tobacco, not for vaping products. Well, I have a retailer in my district that they have the age of tobacco at 19, and I asked them where they got that from, and they Googled it for the state of Minnesota, and they only found Olston County. And so, they had on their counter, they went sell to anyone under 19. Man, people ticked off that, done arguing with them. And so, I already know that would be an education recent. I didn't correct them on that. I mean, but I was thinking, like, well, it's all right as a retailer, pick the age. I don't know about that. But I would like, I would like the sheriff's concerns looked at and if that language could be changed. And I would like to see Beltrami and Carlton County's language, see how that works across. And then we could reach out to your partners in Carlton and Beltrami, tribal partners, and see if it's working. I'm sure they had good intent when they passed it, but now that they're actually doing it, has there been any issues?
I believe Carlton County hasn't passed yet, but Beltrami has.
So, Beltrami has, yep.
So, it'd be interesting to see if we'd be willing to do that and see if it works.
Okay. We told us that Hermitown had tasks, keep one of the...
Yeah, Hermitown was a year ago, and Duluth coming up on a year. And in addition, the other communities locally here that are actively, that I'm pursuing, you know, working in right now are City of Two Harbors, not... you know, working in right now are City of Two Harbors, not the county, Lake County, just City of Two Harbors, um, City of Virginia, City of Hemming, Carlton County, and they are gonna also pass within Cloquet, City of Cloquet, and City of Moose Lake, because they are separate licensing agencies, so, say we have seven, and then just this, in the last week, I Falls has also started conversations, so.
So what's the difference between a city and a county in this?
Yeah, so it depends on who holds the licensing, um, for certain jurisdictions. So a city has the right to license tobacco retailers. Cities can give up that right to the county, so a lot of times, outer line retailer, you know, that are in townships, so like, say, Tocquey or Schroder, those are what would fall under for Cook County, um, and the City of Grand Moray though, does their own licensing. So they, so a county policy would not affect currently the retailers within Grand Moray, and that's why we wanna work with Grand Moray, the city as well, to get the strongest policy possible here for the community, because yeah, technically, if you just pass this as a county, it will not affect retailers right here in Grand Moray, because Grand Moray does their own licensing, so.
Wouldn't it be good to be coordinated?
Yeah, I was gonna say, where are we at with that?
With the city? I've reached out to the city, I believe that they renew their licenses annually, and that they reviewed them in, um, last January, so that will be up for discussion again in the winter.
And aren't they part of the discussion today?
They're invited to, to participate. Um, they're not participating as panelists, speaking on the panel, but they're certainly, um, they've been invited to, to come in and listen and ask questions.
And they can have their own ordinance, and we can have an ordinance that we, of the, the.
I mean, I think ideally, we could pass on the language from the county, and then the city could use that as a model, so there's the least amount of variability between the two, but ideally.
When Amanda initially presented her Public Health and Human Services advisory committee, there was a lot of, of energy within that group to, to move forward with policy change right away, and, um, it was, it was our recommendation, kind of collectively, in, in talking with Amanda and her experience, and working with other communities, to really slow down and take the time to, to review with important partners, and also that we shouldn't wait necessarily to pass a joint city-county ordinance, um, in that we can provide some technical assistance, um, in connecting with the Public Health Law Center, with, you know, taking that first step as a county and having experience in, um, in the policy change and enforcement and other areas of the community, if that, if that was involved with the city, or should they choose to move forward with policy change?
Yeah, the challenge we see when, when a county and a city are trying to do things at the same time, is that rarely does that happen officially, and we don't really, you don't do it with any other policies generally, you don't say, well, you know, we gotta do them in tandem, somebody has to take the lead, whether that's the city or the county, and, um, you know, we did see that in Beltrami, where the county passed first, and then shortly after, the city followed, but it was not a requirement of, we will do this if you do this, it's, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna encourage you to follow. Cause then we play this game of, well, if you're not gonna do it, we're not gonna do it, then nobody does it, and then nobody's protected. So it's better to do something than to do nothing.
So county-wide with the Tocquey and Olston?
Essentially any of those outlier retailers.
Yeah.
If there's any other around.
Do they, if they're, do they sell, do they sell, do they, do they hold?
Yeah. Well, it would be its own jurisdiction.
But his concern is, when numbers are not.
Oh, side of it.
Yeah, same.
Well, that actually puts an interesting spin on your concern, because there are options.
There's not a ton, it's not like we're moved to Minneapolis, I think that it's an education piece that we can work on.
I see this as one step of a broader picture to address concerns over the rise in youth commercial tobacco use, so, I don't, I think it's a good first step, but it's, it's a first step.
Can I point out a couple of things in the ordinance that, or draws commissioners' attention to, first of all, um, the, all those pink comment boxes, um, are decision points for the county, and if commissioners have thought things about which way we should go in, um, drafting the ordinance concerning those items, then you should let us know, um, and so then we'll make those changes. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out is, specific to violations, this ordinance has administrative penalties, which is, um, similar with our older ordinance, but it sets out much better what the process is for issuing the, issuing the violation, contesting the violation, et cetera, and part of contesting, setting up that process is that you have to set up, um, a procedure for hearings and for a hearing officer, which we don't currently have in place. So that's gonna be a directing, you're gonna need to direct resources, um, to set up that procedure, so if you look under section eleven hundred, which starts on page eight, violations, um, a notice needs to be issued as to the violation, so let's presume this is a retailer, you issue a notice to the retailer that the ordinance has been violated, the retailer then has an option to appeal that, um, notice of violation. So the commis, the commissioners need to set up, need to appoint a hearing officer to preside over a hearing if the retailer does a hearing. And then there are, um, financial penalties that are associated with the violations, so, um, questions for you would be, uh, what is the level of penalty, do you wanna go with what's recommended? Um, where does that money go? Is it going to the general fund, or does it go towards some specific purpose, or into some specific account? So just be, be aware that, um, passing the ordinance itself is not gonna be the last step, you can follow up and set up these procedures and, uh, direct staff to follow through those procedures, we'll need to create ones and, and learn our deep ones that exist that we can work with.
So a hearing officer would be different than with the law enforcement?
Would be more like a, um, judge role, right? Cause the, it's gonna be the sheriff's office that issues the violation, so they argue that, the violation, um, and then the retailer argues against the violation, you need somebody to decide, okay, just, do they win their appeal or not? That's what hearing officers are talking about. So it'd be interesting to see how other counties have set up, who they appoint to that goal.
And this isn't gonna be, I know, it's not gonna be a lot.
No, it's not gonna be a lot, it's not gonna be a lot, maybe just a, maybe just over the general.
If it goes to a wife, I'm just gonna slap you.
I mean, Brady's office will have, has expenses related to licensing, and maybe it goes back, perhaps.
It could go toward the compliance checks as well.
Great, I totally forgot what you were bringing.
And, um, those are things that we should have figured out before we passed the ordinance, so. Kind of all of these, we should address all of these boxes essentially.
At least review them, and if you have strong opinions, then let us know, otherwise, you know, it's gonna, you would rely, uh, with help from the sheriff and the county attorney's office to provide you recommendations for which decisions to make.
Yeah, a lot of these seem like, um, kind of clarifications more than questions, um, or explanations rather than questions, I should say.
So, but look at the comment, um, on page five regarding minimum per age. So there's a, you know, some ordinances that have been passed must have a minimum or age of eighteen. Um, the comment is suggesting that, in this county, we would wanna set up that minimum, so what's, you know, do the commissioners have any strong opinions to go with?
I, I have a strong position that I would not want to see a clerk's minimum age to be.
Right.
It's a strong, it's a strong opinion.
It's hard enough to even have a team to, to.
Right.
And that's a typical stance for these smaller communities, is to not, and so that's why when I did have the initial conversation with Public Health Law Center, I said, it's a rural community, I just know, yeah, not gonna allow it to turn on.
Are there other counties that do sixteen?
All of the communities that we have worked with so far have not set a specific minimum of thirteen. They've left it open.
So they left it open.
Not really. I think, like, we discussed already, it's pretty tough to find someone, you know, if, if somebody of age wants to buy a tobacco product, and, and clerk is seventeen, they have to go find someone with twenty-one and make the sale, I think, I think that's our issue.
I know sixteen-year-olds, I know, it's all depending, so we can figure out rules.
Yeah, but the reason that this gets brought up, and could be a concern that a county or a city wants to address, is when you have somebody who is sixteen, seventeen, um, or even eighteen, and now the sales age is twenty-one, and they have their classmates coming, yeah, so it's that peer pressure issue. So that's why that is presented as an option, but it is challenging in smaller communities.
And is this a provision in our current ordinance as a statement, that there are minimums for ages?
No, there, it looks like it's, it's, yeah, I'm confused about the current ordinance. Yeah, we have some section three hundred subdivision ten, it's, it's underlined, and there is a comment, but.
That means that's added language.
Right, so there's currently not.
Did you feel that's right?
I'm sorry?
Did you feel?
Well, what it says here is it's, uh, understanding that the county may not have interest, may not be interested in increasing minimum age, um, it could be included, it's just a border play language, if we choose to do it without the rule. I, uh, I don't, I don't think we should leave it out.
I would feel comfortable leaving it out.
Yeah, and there would be, I mean, I guess it's then on the employer to make sure nothing shady's going on, rather than clerk. How does that work actually, um, as far as the enforcement, is the employer liable, or is it on the itself?
In, in the past, somebody's done these, uh, situation with the employer.
Yeah, yeah.
Seventeen, fifteen, through seventeen, oh, really, they ding them three times, but it's.
So take a look too at subdivision eleven on page five and the comments related to that, so this, uh, on the new, I mean, um, yeah, the new draft, page five, subdivision eleven, under section three hundred, license required. No retail establishment within a thousand feet is what's proposed, a thousand, you could change that, um, of a youth-oriented facility, so we're talking schools, playgrounds, the skate park, the community center, would probably fall under that, um, can be granted license to sell tobacco. Is that gonna potentially affect any current retailers who are licensed? Would they not be able to be licensed under the ordinance? Something about that.
It does say, the restriction doesn't apply to an existing license holder, who's been licensed to sell products in that location for at least a year, so it would be new developments in the future.
But it's something that we're gonna have to remember, would be, in Brady's outlook for it. Like if someone comes to planning and zoning and wants to put up a facility and tell us, this is what they're, it's most that's.
This is essentially a preventive measure, if you don't have any currently, and so it would be putting it in place so that as you go forward, because vape shops are opening up at a very quick pace around the country, they're not here yet, but, um, certainly in Minnesota, and so this would be a preventive measure to say, going forward, a vape store or whatever, any tobacco store could not open within that distance.
Well, I think it would be wonderful if they had a youth-oriented facility downtown.
What would you want to do?
Touche.
But this wouldn't apply in the converse, it would, a youth-oriented facility wouldn't be prohibited from being established here, a tobacco retailer.
Right.
But that's a tobacco retailer.
A new one.
No, right, a new, a new one, yeah.
It's really tricky.
So you have that essentially. What would the government do?
Thank you. Um, is that worth, I mean, is it worth having a place? Would that be?
Um, I, I wanna say I have a lot of gratitude to the, um, Public Health Law Center for redrafting our ordinance apparently, because, I mean, because apparently there are a lot of gaps in it, it needed a lot of improvements that aren't even, you know, necessarily related to the age of tobacco purchase, so, for example, um, the, uh, under fee section four hundred, we had a fee of a hundred dollars that was just right in the ordinance, that would require, um, a new ordinance, amended ordinance with public hearing, et cetera, we even wanted to change that fee, so what they've suggested is that we tie that to a fee schedule so that we can change the fee without that burdensome process, so that's a good idea, regardless of whether you changed the purchasing.
So Molly, do we have to have a public hearing on this?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Do you have any input here?
Can I ask, how does, um, Cook County in particular, do you have a set number of hearings that you are required to have for new ordinances or anything, cause I know some are two, some are three, you have to have a first read and then vote?
Just one, one.
Just one, okay. One thing to note then, as far as how tobacco laws go in Minnesota, you are required to send out a thirty-day notice to all affected retailers before that vote would happen, so just keep that in mind, that even if you guys want to go forward with this right now, um, with the amendments discussed today, I'll bring all these back to the Public Health Law Center, get them changed as quick as possible, and get it back to you guys, um, and I can also send whoever is the correct person, maybe you, and then you can get to somebody, a draft letter to send to the retailers, so that can get drafted and ready to send out.
I still, yeah. And Molly, do you need to post everything on this, first, please, hearing on this? Or?
That's what I'm, I don't have that with me.
Okay.
So just, just, just so I understand, this applies to county retailers or, not city retailers?
Outside of the municipality, yeah, outside of, of the county area.
So we can count them on one hand, right?
What's that?
We can count them on one hand.
Right, right, well, I mean, since, but we do enforcement for the reservation and for the city as well, so I just wanted to be clear that we're only gonna do this in town.
There's the potential for the city to look at in the winter.
There he goes.
Okay, appreciate you coming, thanks so much, and good place for helping put this together, and since it's new to us, we'll keep looking it over, but you'll go back with some of your homework?
Thanks. Brakes, are you willing to be a central point of contact for the commissioner, or should they have any questions or concerns that come up after?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we can also make this available.
And we can also make this available electronically as well if you're having a hard time getting a change.
Excellent, okay. Thanks so much, are you ready?
I do have one other, so, who's gonna be the panel?
Presenting on the panel, it's gonna be representatives from Chamber of Commerce, law enforcement, ISD one sixty-six, ship at the Satooth Mountain Clinic, and then PHHS, one of our case managers.
And so have we heard anything yet from the chamber?
Only from the director, he's been my point of contact and he, he seems supportive. I haven't asked him specifically what his thoughts are about this ordinance passing or not, but.
Because I, yeah, it'd be valuable to hear from his members, you know, just to have that dialogue, you know.
So you can do that?
Right, how did you get that impression?
I do have more invitations that you've already seen. He wants to remember where and when.
Oh, I have it, I have it scheduled. What I was, more what I was looking for is an opportunity for the members of the Chamber of Commerce to give feedback to the director of the chamber so that we can.
Yeah.
Here.
I think that sounds like a great idea.
Focus, yeah.
I don't, I don't think that that is feedback that he's gotten, but I'm not sure, I've only been communicating with him about participating on the panel, not what he's heard from his members.
Yeah, and so, but he does have a copy of the ordinance?
Not yet.
Does this affect Boomer?
How would it affect what?
The duty free store. That's a good question. I believe it's still, it's in the county. So, yeah, I think it would. But the problem is, you cannot possess tobacco from a duty free store unless you first pass through Canada and come back. But they're purchasing tobacco. Purchasing it, but they don't actually, they don't actually get handed the tobacco until they get up to the border in which they have to take it across. They don't just take it out of there, you know, they meet you up at, up at the river. But even it's going straight through.
I'm not sure I understand that issue.
So, so, so when you purchase duty free tobacco or liquor, you make the purchase at the store and they meet you, because the stipulation is you have to take it into the foreign country first and then bring it back. That's how they avoid paying taxes. So, when you buy, what, your tobacco products, you make the purchase there, you meet them at the river, they drive it up to you, hand it there, and you have to drive across, because there's no way you can come back again. You have to drive into Canada, basically what you do is you drive to Canadian Customs, you tell them what you did, you just turn around and you come back to the US. But even the other way, that it's still going through their purchase. Yeah, that's, I don't understand.
So it would be an additional?
I think, I think we need to consider that, yes. Because, because, because you can have, this is nineteen in, in Canada, so you could purchase it as a nineteen year old here, take it into Canada, I mean, you make the purchase, but I mean, you don't actually take possession of it until you are going into the other country.
So the US side, when you come back this way, do they ask if you have tobacco with you? And do they check your age?
Sometimes, well, I mean, you have to give me your ID or passport.
So not a lot is gonna change, except for that.
I mean, if they're in possession of it. I mean, it's, it's, I guess it's anything, just, just like, like liquor, I mean, when the drinking age is nineteen in Ontario.
Where does this, where does this prohibit possession of tobacco by a hundred or twenty-one year old?
It doesn't.
But they're purchasing here in Cook County, so that would still, they would still be affected in that way.
But what if they purchase in Ontario?
We don't control this.
I know, but bring it back to Cook County.
We don't, that one.
They can.
Yeah, they can do that under this ordinance, because this only affects retailers in Cook County.
I'm just.
Is your, is your point that they can just go to Canada and buy it anyway?
Well, no, well, I mean, they, they can, so, so, I'm, I'm asking, I'm talking about the enforcement portion of it.
Because I can go into Boomer Shop, buy tobacco, if, pretend I'm eighteen, I can buy tobacco, I can pick it up at the border, you turn around and come back, I am purchasing under twenty-one.
Right. You made the purchase here, what I'm saying is, is what if you purchase it and Thunder Ban bring it back across? Right, so, so what we're targeting here, we're not targeting.
Possession.
Possession, we're targeting sales. And his businesses, the health college, duty free.
So can I ask that?
Oh, here you go.
Would it be helpful for me to get clarity on this from the Public Health Law Center? Because they know, like, in Minneapolis-St. Paul, where they've done this, the airport, obviously it's duty free, they know that that was, they had questions around it, the airport and enforcement there, so I can find out and get back to you on that.
And if, and if international falls is considered, this deal will be the single.
Well, I guess, and so what your concern is, is the percent of, the percent of revenue that he's gonna be impacted by?
If you go back to the earlier comment that only two percent of the retail sales of tobacco were in that segment that's addressed by this, it may or may not be an issue, I'm not sure that he would have data on that.
Speaking of which, is that Health Lens Analysis Tool where that data came from, is that gonna be at the panel, presented at the panel or available?
Some of the questions that are asked to the panelists get to different pieces that are in the Health Lens Analysis Tool, but it's not presented formally, it's more hearing different perspectives from different parts of the community on, on some of the pieces of that tool.
Can you post the tool on our Public Health Law page and just drop people to the website if they want to?
The panel is mainly a paper, right? Not some issue on duty twenty-one?
It'll be part of it, but I think it's a more general conversation than the conversation that committee of the whole is, because it's, I mean, the audience, it's open, but a lot of the, the more targeted invitations have been to parents of children in the school district, so I imagine it'll be more questions about talking with your children about vaping or concerns related to the recent rise in youth vaping in Cook County. But Tobacco Twenty-One and this conversation and the fact that there will be a public hearing that will definitely be part of it, it'll be mentioned, but it won't be the focus of the entire event.
Maybe some more questions, should we, or is it impacted, is just vaping, like, supply ordinance? And how much does that affect? There's a lot of questions.
I would say to that, the, the recommendation, the strongest policy is tobacco overall and not separating it out. We are, we're dealing with that with Hiving right now, they are looking at separating it out. And the directive from the Public Health Law Center is that that opens up a community to litigation, because then you are classifying different people and different products under different classes and that, that opens you up to potentially, yeah, equal protection. So it does get a lot more complicated if you split it out. And tobacco is still the number one.
Okay, anything else?
I would say regarding the general law ordinance, acting publication is listed there. And notice of intention to an act has to be published, not less intended, for the meeting or a public hearing. So, we could set that a date at the next meeting and then follow that.
We also have to follow thirty days term length.
Yeah, it's just a minimum of thirty days, so you could certainly send them out now and then anytime the next several months.
Once we hear that.
Yes, yes, I will get on this right away.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I can just give her an electronic copy.